See, Elkins bailed out. Elkins got tired of us. I put it in the back. I'm told his hair still don't matter. Hey, Fred? Okay. Hey, did you read that original resolution? Fourteen dash two seventy? That's, that's, the board approved a seven-year agreement. From a hike up to ten years. I don't know. But see, but anyways, this is gonna get ugly for this time. You know that. But anyway, we're gonna get, we gotta get through it. If you will and enable, if you would stand for the invocation, remain standing for the flag, and I will ask the Reverend Michael Tenny from the Henry Baptist Church, if you would, to have the invocation. Thank you Reverend.
Thank you sir. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we're so thankful for this day that you've given to us. We saw the fog outside, and we thank you that it'll lift, and it'll be an unusually warm day for February second. We give you thanks for that, and we receive it as a gift from you. Thank you Father for everyone that's here today, and all the things that will take place in this room throughout the afternoon. We would simply ask that you would bless us with the blessings of heaven today. You've told us that you'll give us wisdom, if we lack it and we ask it of you, so we pray for wisdom. We pray for your life and your light, and all of the benefits of heaven to be on this group of people today as decisions are made and businesses presented and all of the things that'll, that'll happen here. And Lord, thank you for the privilege that we have to call on you and invoke the blessings of heaven, and we thank you that you're real. We thank you for the fact that you have concern about the things that go on in our life, and Lord, we're just so thankful for this day, and we pray that there'll be tangible blessings from heaven because we pause to remember you at the beginning of it in thy name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. For the Henry County Board of Commissioners, nine AM Tuesday, February the second, 2016, meeting come to order. I would like to ask the board to consider an amendment, another budget amendment, and I would suggest we put it under thirteen B to transfer some monies that should've been done several months ago, but I would like to amend the agenda to place that on the agenda. Other than that, I would suggest we approve the agenda as published. They have a motion District One?
Yes.
Second District Three, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. We're gonna recognize the Henry County Fire Department Awards and summary of the 2015-2016 Annual Budget Chief Brad Johnson. Good morning.
Good morning Chairman Commissioners. Thank you for having us this morning. This morning, I'd like to present to you the summary of the 2015 end-of-year report from the Henry County Fire Department. We do have representation today from our brave men and women here, and we are covered in the county. These are mostly off-duty firefighters, so your stations are covered. Comment was made earlier, so they're here today on their own time to support each other in this endeavor. In 2015, we had a pretty significant year. In front of you, you have your 2015 report published for each of you. Manager, you have yours also. And I'll go over a few, quickly go over a few highlights of that report. Maybe. All right, we're improvised. We'll talk through it from the slideshow. It's a summary of the, the report you have in front of you for your 2015 Henry County Fire Department annual report. In 2015, we implemented a third battalion response model with a shift commander. We placed brush seven, brush eleven in service at Station Eleven. We upgraded our cardiac monitors to, something happened. We upgraded our cardiac monitors to provide a better response system for our citizens in need of cardiac monitoring. We responded to twenty-four thousand, two-hundred-and-thirty-eight alarms. We completed seventy-nine thousand, six-hundred-and-twenty-nine hours of combined training for both fire and EMS. We conducted five thousand, six-hundred-and-forty-six existing building inspections. We reviewed five-hundred-and-thirty new building site plans and conducted nine hundred, oh, seven-hundred-and-ninety-seven building inspections for new buildings. Structure fires, we ran two-hundred-and-one working structure fires in the county, one-hundred-and-fifteen vehicle fires, four-hundred-and-forty-nine other fires, which would be your rubbish trash fires, and so on. In our emergency medical area, we had nineteen thousand and thirty-one medical responses, eighteen thousand, nine-hundred-and-forty-five patient contacts, and transported fourteen thousand, four-hundred-and-eighty-three patients, which is about thirteen-hundred additional patients over last year, which is a significant growth pattern for us. Along with that, we collected about four million, seven-hundred-thousand, eighty-three dollars in our EMS billing. In other responses, we had nine-hundred-and-three false alarms, two-hundred-and-fifty-three mutual aid calls, one-hundred-and-sixty-six hazmat calls, and three-hundred, three-thousand-one-hundred-and-twenty-two other calls. A significant part of history is from two thousand and five, the last ten years, we've responded to about sixteen thousand responses. In two thousand and fifteen, we responded almost twenty-four thousand, or at twenty-four thousand, two-hundred-and-thirty-eight, which is a significant increase with resources, in addition to the resources added. In two thousand and fifteen, we had a hundred-and-thirty-seven community outreach events. We installed a hundred-and-thirty-six smoke alarms, fifty station tours, forty-four preschool visits, twenty-eight career days, twenty-six school visits, eight senior fire safety events, four useful fire center intervention contacts. We also held two fire academy classes, Citizens' Fire Academies, one in the spring, one in the fall, for our citizens to come in and see the Henry County Fire Department inside and out. We support our explore program, but more importantly, what are we doing in two thousand and sixteen, upcoming year? First thing we want to do is address some retention issues and, and enhance our recruitment program. I think that's very important. Need to address our aging apparatus needs. Need to complete and update our strategic departmental strategic plan. Enhance underserved areas of Henry County. And we're doing that by opening Station fourteen in the Llewellyn area by the end of this year, and starting Station fifteen this year. We're gonna roll out the one-hundred-and-one Days of Summer, which is a new initiative we're doing for fire safety, EMS safety for our community. It's going between Memorial Day and Labor Day, which will have a new initiative each day of the summer for fire EMS prevention. We'll also continue our explore program and continue our Citizens' Fire Academy program. But we also want to thank you for your support. We couldn't do this without the support of the Commissioners, the manager, and the staff to support us in our endeavors. On January ninth of this year, we had our awards banquet at the Locust Grove Event Center. This is a peer-driven process. We have nominations from peers that is reviewed by peers to award various awards to our, to our personnel. And I'll call their names and have them come up to the front. Our rookie firefighter of the year was firefighter EMT Adrian Probie. Our EMT of the year was firefighter EMT Joey Earl. Our EMT of the year was Jacob Pritchett, firefighter EMT, I'm sorry. Yes, firefighter EMT Jacob Pritchett. I'm sorry, Joey Earl. Firefighter of the Year is Joey Earl. EMT of the Year Jacob Pritchett. I got him out of order here for a few minutes. Paramedic of the Year Billy Petit. Our Logistics Support Member of the Year David Lanning. Our Preventing Officer of the Year is Ron Reagan, Captain Ron Reagan. Our Training Officer of the Year is Lieutenant Richie LaCroix. Our Officer of the Year is Captain Michael Black. Our Valor Award this year went to Station Eleven on A shift. They're the, the first-end company. Station Eleven and Station Six responded to Swan Lake with a car that was upside down in Swan Lake with the entrapment that rescued a young lady out of that for a successful recovery. And it was Station Eleven. Guys from Station Eleven come up. Our Station of the Year was Station One for all three shifts. They were voted on to have the Station of the Year between all three, all thirteen stations for their activities they do on an everyday basis. And our Special Service Award this year went to Squad Eighty-Two. Squad Eighty-Two is our rehab unit. Retired Chief Charlie Rice, Gloria Rice, retired Chief Jerry Neal are our key members of this. This group are volunteers that respond to rehab unit to our, our major incidents, our hazmat calls, our house fires, and provide rehab functions for our firefighters while they're working. It is a significant part of our operation, and we thank them for what they do every day. Commissioners, this is a few of our people. These are the ones that were nominated and awarded, uh, awards for the 2015 Excellence in Service Awards they've, they've done. But I do want to thank the entire Henry County Fire Department for their service and the awards they do every day. This is just a, a small section of the heroic activities they do on a daily basis. So I present you the 2015 awards nominees, award recipients.
Guys, we don't, walk over here. I'm gonna get you in front of the picture up here. There goes our, there goes.
Thank you. Public comments, citizens are allowed to voice county-related concern, opinions, et cetera, that are not listed on the agenda during this portion of the meeting. All persons wished to speak for public comments must sign in with the county clerk prior to the beginning of the meeting. You must complete the public comments speaker form, or you will not be recognized. You will be able to address the board for five minutes. Do we have any? Next, we have a request for Mr. Bill Tony to address the board, and this will be for our fifteen minutes. State your name for the record, please.
Bill Tony, sixteen fifty-two, Highway one fifty-five north, McDonough.
Hear you much, really?
Bill Tony, sixteen fifty-two, Highway one fifty-five north, McDonough. I'd like to kinda clear up a little something that, with Gary. You said something that kinda bothered me. You said I had a grudge against you. I like you. We've, we've been to lunch together. We've been to dinner together. But when, when you get through with the personal side of it, this is business. And I don't have a grudge against you, by no means. I've never said anything that I know of disrespectful. I've just, like I told you, we've, when we had lunches or dinners or whatever, that I would hold your feet to the fire. Is, is that, I mean, you can just nod if you, but, but I just, I just want you to know that. There's nothing here, this is business. This is taxpayers' money. And I'd like for y'all to think about, this morning, how many people got up, got dressed, and went to work to make money to pay taxes? A lot of people. And, and they've, they've elected you guys to see, to, to, to put their best interest at heart. And I know that y'all are not perfect, by no means. But I'm not, I'm not perfect by any means. But you gotta know, you know, you screw up sometimes, you gotta be accountable for it. And that's where I feel like I come in. I pretty well try to hold y'all accountable, and if I see something that's not right, I, I say something about it. Well, excuse me. This golf course thing just won't go away. Every time, every time I turn around, I get something new on it. I met with the county manager yesterday, and he forwarded some numbers from Mr. Oletta on the golf course. And they're, and they're, y'all, y'all are saying that it's only gonna be a twenty-eight, twenty-eight thousand dollar loss. Well, all the numbers are projected numbers. In the business world, you have to have projections, but they got to be realistic projections. Nothing against Mr. Oletta, but I think his numbers ran a little bit high. All right, from July to December, you lost seventy-eight thousand dollars, seventy-eight thousand, six-hundred-and-forty-eight dollars and ninety-seven cent. This is y'all's, y'all's figures. January, you lost twenty-one thousand, six-hundred-and-ninety-eight dollars and eighty-two cent. Now that's, that's losing money for seven months. One month you showed a positive, but then it got sucked up. Now, by some miraculous thing, after, after this month, we start heading north, and we're supposed to be making all this money. Looking at it from a business standpoint, you lost a hundred and, a hundred thousand, three-hundred-and-forty-seven dollars in seven months. The Swinakers that run it, we paid them a hundred-and-nineteen thousand dollars a month. All right? We got into an agreement that hopefully we can get out of. Now, at the last meeting, County Manager, Mr. Bonner, he said that he was talking to them. Yesterday, I asked the question, are we negotiating with them? Because it sounded like we were negotiating with them. He said, no. We're not, he said, we're talking to them about trying to get something done. Well, talking, if you've got a two-million-dollar deal, a two-million, ten-year, one-hundred-and-twenty-month deal, there's no negotiating, I think. I mean, they got a good deal. I think that, I think that we were over our head with the, with the, our legal department. Patrick, I think he's a, he's a good guy, but I think he falls short on going up against Buddy Welch. And you need somebody that can be equal or above Buddy Welch when you go to it. You don't carry a knife to a gunfight. And I think Patrick is maybe over his head, and we need to bring in some outside legal counsel on this. And if nothing else, bring in somebody that can take a look at it from a, a standpoint to where, what can we do to turn this deal around and, and, and do the best thing for the county and the taxpayers? Now, I've looked at the golf course. I think, I really think that we need to close it. And I know that everybody feels a little bit different from that. I also feel like that we ought to slice off what we need. We need to put the rest of it up for sale. All right? Nobody here agrees with that. So it's just like a money hole over there. You just keep throwing hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars in this big old gigantic hole. You know, you would, if you sold it, even if you took a hit on a sale, you would start getting revenue back. If you encouraged building over there, office complexes and such as that, you'd be getting money back. This way, you, you can stop the bleeding, get something going on over there. This is nothing but, but it's just killing the, the taxpayers. All right? This one right here, if anything I say... Anything I say makes sense to anybody else, that, another taxpayer, anything else, and you want to give your opinion on what, what, what we need to do with that golf course. And all, all these meetings and everything's open for, for public record. People can go, they can look, they can ask for things on Freedom of Information. Anybody that's got anything out there to say to you guys, if they think you're doing a great job, if they think you're doing a poor job, just suggestions, I hope y'all welcome the, the phone calls and the suggestions from the people out there. My suggestion is, we get ahold of a good attorney, see if we can get out of this deal, sell the golf course, get rid of it, close it, make it a park, do whatever, whatever we can do to stop the bleeding. This, 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 just remember, you guys, remember the people that got up this morning, that get up every morning to go to work, to pay taxes. Thank you very much.
Next, we have a request to address the board. Mr. Steve Richardson, if you would, address, state your name for the record, please.
Good morning.
Good morning. Steve Richardson, two oh seven, Wind Drive in Hampton. Before I get started, a quick follow-up. I, I don't agree with much of what he says, but if we've got money to waste on a golf course, and we ought to have money to give these public servants, fire, police, time and grade, time and service pay scales, we ought to be able to fix that. If we can, if we can waste money on a golf course, then we ought to be able to pay these guys what they deserve. So just before I get started on my little rant. I appreciate the opportunity this morning to speak. Today, I want to provide a year-end review and reflect on some of the corruption and ridiculousness that has transpired in Henry County in 2015. I want to title my remarks to Chairman Tommy Smith, banner for year lies, scandals, and cover-ups. It's been a great year for Chairman Smith. I think you've exceeded even your own expectations to hold the county back, hurt the county employees, fleece the taxpayers, and just flat-out lied to the people that now regret over allowing you to have a job with any responsibilities. I only have fifteen minutes today, so I can't possibly speak to all the despicable acts, but I can address some of the highlights, and there are many. Let's start with the most recent firing of HR Director Nedra Swift. In an article published by the Henry Herald, Ms. Swift's legal complaint against the county has the following statement: "By time when the county has been an endless stream of roadblocks, intimidation, unfounded innuendo regarding my integrity, none of which is conducted, is conducive to an environment of achievement productivity." Let's be clear, Mr. Chairman, that statement's directed right at you. "I can create a laundry list of exceptional, peaceful people who have worked for this county during your time as chairman, yet they were either run off or fired by your made-up nonsense. I'm talking about talented people with impeccable records until they disagree with you. Beat you fair and square on issues of substance, but tried to better the county. You and your small band of psychotic nitwits have lied, cheated, have been completely despicable and relentless, and you're in tax on good people. Let's name a few. Brian Preston, Rick Jeffers, Lindy Farmer, Jim Walker, Keith Nichols, Bill Lacy, Fred Oletta, Sherry Matthews, and now Nedra Swift. It's a simple question, Mr. Chairman, how can all these people be at the top of their profession and at the top of their class for decades, but when they cross paths with you, they are labeled as dishonest or without class by you or your cronies? The only common denominator in any of this, Chairman Smith, is you. You should be ashamed of yourself. You're a sociopath with no moral compass, so of course you're not ashamed." Another quote in Ms. Swift's complaint also sounds eerily familiar. Smith indicated to then interim Chair, County Manager Sherry Matthews, that he would appoint Matthews to the county manager position if she fired Swift. We can only speculate how many lies you have told or backdoor deals like this you have tried to cut, to or damaged and destroyed the people you disagree with. In your mind, Chairman Smith, you can twist and turn the facts any way you want, and boil up and tell people, "I'm an Eagle Scout and I cannot tell a lie." Well, today, let's prove without a shadow of doubt that you're a liar who has misled every citizen in this county, including your handful of remaining supporters, and I'm going to use your own words to do it. Let's start with the big lie about your lawsuit against your fellow Commissioners, Chairman Smith. You allege that five of the Commissioners were preventing you from performing your executive duties. However, when asked if one of your executive duties was to hire and fire employees, you told the Henry Herald, and I quote, I'm gonna read it from the paper, "I am still hot that they changed this without a referendum," Smith said. "They neutered me." There's many dirt roads we can go down with that one, but we'll just leave it with your words. "I don't think the governing body can delegate executive power to the county manager. I never thought I had the ability to hire or fire." That's, that's the newspaper. However, now let's turn our attention to the lawsuit. This is a document you testified to under oath and presented to a court of law. In your own filings, playing your case, you state plaintiff contends the chairman has the power to hire and fire employees. It also goes on further. If you read past that, it says here that the county attorney, who I believe at the time was Latony Wadi, your buddy, told you straight up that you didn't have the ability to hire and fire employees. This is a document you testified to under oath and presented to a court of law. In your own filings, playing it in your case, you state plaintiff contends hiring and fire. There you go. So let's be clear. You told the paper, the citizens of Henry County, and your small band of followers, that you thought you had the ability to hire and fire employees. But behind closed doors and a court of law, away from the public, you swore under oath that you believe you did have the ability to hire and fire employees. So which is it, Chairman Smith? Did you lie to the people of Henry County, or did you lie to the Superior Court Judge under oath? Either way, you've lied. And according to the standard you hold, everyone wants a liar, always a liar. And I say it pretty much sums you up completely, Mr. Chairman. But let's not stop there. You recently granted again a Henry, Henry Herald complaining about the twenty-seven thousand dollars excess legal fees last, that were spent last year after your fellow Commissioners got rid of your soulmate Latony Wadi against your wishes. What you didn't tell the public is the county overpaid twenty-seven thousand dollars of taxpayer money to cover your legal bills in your frivolous lawsuit against your fellow Commissioners. More lies, more smoke and mirrors, Mr. Chairman. And now, now let's remind the citizens of how the lawsuit worked out for you. In addition to wasting taxpayer money on your silliness, you were spanked by the Commissioners, spanked by the Georgia House of Representatives, spanked by the Georgia State Senate, and spanked by the Governor of Georgia when he signed a, a law, signed it- spanked by the Governor of Georgia when he signed a, a law, signed into law a bill that would keep you in a little box where your damage to the people of Henry County could be minimized. In the end, you dropped the lawsuit and fleeced the taxpayers for your legal bills. Along the way, you made Henry County a laughingstock and a butt of jokes around the state, and you reminded all of us how foolish we were to voting against B.J. Mathis to punish her. In her place, we elected you a complete incompetent, unfit for public office. I'm fully convinced the people of Henry County have learned their lesson and can't wait to show you the door at the end of the year. Your tenure as chairman has been a complete disaster, and everybody knows it, except you and your shrinking handful, who because they don't know any better, still drink your crazy Kool-Aid. Even knowing you flat-out lied to them won't change their minds, and for that, I feel sorry for them. But let's keep going. Everybody know, as you've done in the past, as soon as you use someone, I apologize, let me back up. Everybody knows your backdoor buddies spread your lies for you. I've complained before about your hitman, Bill Tony and Jennifer Rosenbaum. It seems to me your friend and confident Jennifer Rosenbaum has found herself in a bit of trouble, accused of killing a two-year-old child. As you've done in the past, as soon as you've used someone and you don't need them anymore, you drop them like a hot potato. What you can't undo are all the emails and texts you and Ms. Rosenbaum shared as you were attacking good people. I'm certain the police and investigators have Ms. Rosenbaum's computer and cellphone in custody. I only hope many of the dastardly deeds come to light as evidence in her trial. I bet you've lost a few nights' sleep worrying about, about that many backdoor dealings that you've had in attacks finally come to light today, and the public will get a clearer picture of the kind of monster you really are. I've heard no public comments of support from Ms. Rosenbaum from you, Mr. Chairman. She was your handpicked candidate to replace Bo Moss, who you've also belittled and insulted publicly for the last three years. You helped her get a job in your daughter's office. Probate Judge Kelly Smith Powell, who you don't speak up for now. Is it because you circled the family wagons when you learned your daughter's strong-arm D-facts to circumvent the foster-parent process and give Ms. Rosenbaum clearance to be a foster parent in 10, in 10 days instead of the 30 days required of everyone else? You see, ladies and gentlemen, dirty politics, backdoor dealings, dishonesty, and only taking care of friends and family is a way of life in the Smith family. The citizens of Henry County and what's good for them do not factor in Smith family politics. 2016 needs to be the last year any citizen has to suffer the hands of Tommy Smith or any member of his family. This is your last year, Chairman Smith, so take the best shot at Henry County. I'm sure you will build a budget, vote to support your budget, but then you will fund your own budget, just as you have, but then vote not to fund your own budget, just as you have the past two years. I'm not making this stuff up, ladies and gentlemen. It's all very real, and it's all right here in Henry County. And it will stay this way until we collectively kick Tommy Smith and his reign of corruption out to the curb. Thank you.
Moving right along, we have a board appointment on the Council of Aging. We have a resolution that Henry County Board of Commissioners appointing a citizen to the Henry County Council on Aging, and that would be, I yield the floor to, to District One.
Yeah, thank you, sir. I'd like to move to appoint Susan Craig to the Council of Aging to start immediately.
May I have a motion?
Second.
Have a second? Uh, any further discussion, honor, if you raise your right hand, so move. Thank you. Consent agenda. The following, uh, agenda items shall be considered on a consent agenda before voting on a consent agenda. The chairman will provide an opportunity to add or delete. Resolution approving the Family Connecting Operating Grant for Connecting Henry for the Georgia Department of Human Services. We have a, uh, CDBG request to consider adopting the guidance on resale and recaptured provision requirement under the home program, and to authorize the community development record to direct and administer the neighborhood stabilization program in accordance with the policies. Have a resolution approving a budget amendment to transfer funds from contingency funds to, uh, indigent burial account in the amount of $3,500. Resolution approving the renewal of a contract between Piedmont Henry Hospital and the Henry County Fire Department for the purchase of pharmaceutical and medical supplies. Resolution approving to declare county property held by the Police Department as surplus and approved the disposal of such. Uh, resolution approving to surplus 58 used and expired bullet resisted vests and to deliver said vest to the Armah of God Project. Resolution approving the downgrade of the Lieutenant Criminal Intelligent Unit Job Description to a Sergeant Criminal Intelligent Unit. Uh, that ends the consent agenda. Does anybody like to add to or delete any of the items I just read? If not, will somebody move to accept the, uh, resolutions as read, as consent? Have a dis- have a motion District Three? Second District One, any further discussion, honor, if you raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. Resolution authorizing the Henry County Police Department to purchase four Rockland Custom Cabinets, four motorcycle vehicle equipments with installation, four mobile radio packages, four watch guard and car package, four Decatur radar units, and four graphic packages using funds from the state. Seized funds presented, Mr. Keith Goins.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Board of Commissioners. Resolution before you is a request to authorize the Police Department to purchase four of each one of the items that I'm going to describe. The purpose of this is, back in, uh, November of, of 2015, the commissioners authorized us to purchase, uh, Chevrolet Tahos for the traffic unit utilizing seized funds. The equipment as follows is for outfitting those, those vehicles that we've now purchased. Um, we've gone through the purchasing process with the Henry County Purchasing Department, and all of these items are either be under state contract or were awarded to the bidders. Um, first off, we would request to purchase four Rockland Custom Cabinets. These are the cabinets that would go in the back of the vehicles themselves. The purpose of this is, the, the vehicles are for the accident reconstruction and investigations teams. This would hold the equipment for them to be able to do the measurements and to, to scale drawings out on the scenes themselves. In addition to that, uh, we're requesting four emergency vehicle equipment packages and installation that would be required with those, four mobile radios for the vehicles, as well as watch guard in-car camera packages for each one of the vehicles. Uh, the last two items, one would be radar units for the vehicles for traffic enforcement, and the last item being four graphic packages to be able to properly outfit the vehicles on the exterior for track, uh, traffic enforcement. A total dollar figure for this would be $92,150.16, and we're requesting to use authorized seized funds from the state seized funds account to make these purchases.
Anybody have any comments or questions? Yes, sir.
Major Goins, did we vet this vendor? I, I know we had a major issue with our last SUVs that we sent down. They were out for nine weeks or so.
Yes, sir.
Did we vet this vendor to make sure they're gonna be responsive to our needs?
Yes, sir. All the problems that we had last time, we discussed with purchasing prior to going forward with the bid process this time, I believe we've alleviated most of that, especially in reference to the timeframe of return.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other further comments, questions? If not, we have a resolution in the book, uh, as previously stated, if somebody would consider moving in that direction. Have a motion District Four?
Second.
Second District Three, and if further discussion, honor, if you raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. Next, we have a resolution amend the Henry County Police Department budget by reallocating funds for the Criminal Investigation Division Personal Services and Benefits and Uniforms.
Yes, sir. Good morning again. Uh, this request is to amend the Police Department budget by reallocating funds from the Criminal Investigation Division Personnel Services and Benefits and the Uniform Patrol Division Personnel Services and Benefits accounts to the Small Equipment and Capital Outlays Site Improvements account. Henry County Police Department was approved and budgeted for 229 officer positions. However, throughout the year, we've maintained close to 20 openings, uh, filling some, losing some. Uh, the Police Department did allocate monthly budgetary funds to cover all of the positions, and during this specific quarter, the funds that were not author, or were not utilized during that period of time had now become available for reallocation. Uh, under the Criminal Investigation Division, the division currently has a total of $79,840.33 in Personnel Services and Budgets account realized as an actual salary savings. The department requests to reallocate $25,645 from this specific account and place it into the Small Equipments account for real, reallocation. Police Department requests to use the allocated funds in the Small Equipment account to replace shelving in the Wreckers Division. This is a rolling filing system that will help protect the individual documents themselves from fire sprinklers as well as fire and theft. Uh, the files are not protected for monitor damage currently, and if the room were to flood for any reason, it would damage the, the documents themselves. The total cost for that is $25,644.32. In addition, under the Uniform Patrol Division, currently has a total of $260,957.97 available in the Personnel Services and Benefits account realized as salary savings. The department requests to reallocate $151,914 from this Personnel, Personal Service and Benefits account to capital outlays for site improvement. The Police Department requests to use these reallocated funds to replace torn, discolored, ripping carpet throughout the Police Department, as well as replacing them with carpet tiles, that which will allow us, once one of them gets damaged, to remove it and immediately replace it without having to replace the entire thing. Uh, the estimated price for the building improvement is $151,913.78, and we're requesting to be able to reallocate these funds for these two purchases.
Anybody else have any comments or questions? If not, we have a resolution, uh, Board of Commissioners amend the Henry County Police Department budget by reallocating funds from the Criminal Investigation Division Personnel Services and Benefit and Uniform Patrol Division Personal Services and Benefit accounts to the Small Equipment and Capital Outlays Site Improvement account. Somebody move in that direction.
Move to approve.
Have a motion District Four?
Second.
Second District One, any further discussion, honor, if you raise your right hand, so move.
Thank you, sir.
Chief. Resolution awarding a BF Engineering Services for the industrial, uh, at Georgia 20. Good morning, Rocky.
Good morning, Chairman and Board members. SPLUS 4 was approved by the voters, uh, in November of 2013. Industrial at Stereot 20 is an approved District Two SPLUS 4 project. The Purchasing Department issued an invitation to bid for the shortlisted firms, SPLUS-funded Transportation Projects Intersection Improvements, bid number 16-40, for the design services of industrial at Stereot 20. Four seal bids were received and reviewed. Funding for the design services is available in the project budget. The lowest bid is for $44,400 from Heath and Lineback Engineers, Inc. Staff recommends awarding of the bid for the design services of industrial Stereot 20.
Anybody have any comments or questions? Somebody move, we, uh, approve resolution awarding a BF Engineering Service Design for industrial at 20?
Move to approve.
I have a motion District Two, second from District Three, any further discussion, honor, if you raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. Resolution awarding a bid for engineering design service for Selfridge Road Speedway Boulevard at airport entrance.
Yes, Chairman and Commissioners. Selfridge Road, uh, from Speedway Boulevard to airport entrance is an approved District Two SPLUS 4 project. The Purchasing Department issued an invitation to bid for the shortlisted firms, SPLUS-funded Transportation Projects, Stereot, bid number 16-37, for the design services of Selfridge Road. Three seal bids were received and reviewed. Funding for the design services is available within the budget project. The lowest bid is $96,112 from Wolverton and Associates. Staff recommends awarding the bid for design services for Selfridge Road to Wolverton and Associates. Any questions?
Anybody have any comments or questions?
Move to approve.
Have a motion to approve a resolution bid engineering services for Selfridge Road, uh, to have a second, Second District Three, any further discussion, honor, if you raise your right hand, all opposed, same sign, so move. Resolution awarding a BF Engineering Design Service for South Cleveland Church Road.
Yes, Chairman. Uh, South Cleveland Church from New Morn to Stone Road is an approved District Two SPLUS 4 project. The Purchasing Department issued an invitation to bid for the shortlisted firms, SPLUS-funded Transportation Projects, Stereot, bid numbered 16-38, for the design services of South Cleveland Church Road. Three seal bids were received and reviewed. Funding for the design services is available in the project budget. The lowest bid is $90,695 from Wolverton and Associates. Staff recommends awarding the bid for the design services of South Cleveland Church Road to Wolverton and Associates in the amount of $90,695.
Have a motion to approve a resolution, uh, bid for engineering services. Have a second? Uh, any further discussion, honor, if you raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. Next, we have a resolution approving a renewal of an on-call design service for SPLUS-funded Transportation Projects.
Yes, Chairman and Commissioners. On Feb. 3rd, 2015, the Henry County Board of Commissioners approved the award of RFQ number 15-20 for the on-call engineering design services for SPLUS-funded Transportation Project to the following firms. ACOM, Heath and Lineback Engineers, McGee Partners, Moffett Nichols, and Wolverton and Associates for the intersections, including sidewalks. To American Consulting Professionals, Heath and Lineback Engineers, McGee Partners, RS&amp;H, and Wolverton and Associates for the Stereot. And to ACOM Arcadas, Heath and Lineback, Moffett and Nichols, and RS&amp;H for the bridges per resolution number 15-38 on a renewal annual basis. Design services are awarded to the lowest bidder of the selected on-call engineering firms per the relevant category upon approval of the Henry County Board of Commissioners. The first period of these services was from February 20th, 2015, through February 19th of 2016. The renewal of the use of the services for the period of February 20th, 2016, through February 19th, 2017 is requested. Funding for engineering design services is available in the individual projects account. Staff recommends approval of the renewal for engineering services for the year 2016, 2017.
Is this the, uh, renewal that we took bids and on-call means that we don't take bids on every project? Is that what this means?
What, what, what this is, is, last year, the board approved where, instead of the county putting every project alphabet individually, we selected five firms per category, and those are pre-selected, and they were good for one year with a renewal basis of two additional years. So, we're here requesting for the first renewal of 2016, 2017.
Got it. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Rocky, I know we, we had briefly talked about this, and, and you have a, a pipeline of projects that you're, we're starting to crank on the SPLUS list, but I know that there's a lot of commissioners that still, we, we like our local businesses, and I know, you know, a lot of us are local business owners, too. Is there any potential, I'm just asking this out of curiosity, is there any way, 'cause I don't want to slow down what's in the pipeline right now, but is there any way, instead of doing another year extension, we do a six, nine-month extension, and then, in that time, y'all try to come up with a process that, just make sure that we at least give an option to the, to the local businesses here in town?
I, I would defer to...
Or does that blow things up? I'm just asking out of curiosity.
No, it doesn't. It doesn't. We could, we could do a six-month. It, they would have to accept those terms. Um, it differs from the terms of the RFP, but we could certainly negotiate down the scope. That wouldn't be a, a huge concern on my, on my point. I mean, I, I, I look at legal, I don't think you would have...
And here's the other thing, other question. I don't want any of the service providers who are currently doing good work for us to think that they're just getting thrown out on their ear. I mean, they still would be, have access to, to bid, it's just that, I don't know, we, we are a Henry County government, and it's nice to ha, get, make sure we just give some courtesy to Henry County businesses, too.
And I would, I would say that we both appreciate that, because we, this program has been extremely successful for us, and it gives us the opportunity to complete the list of defined projects that we wanted to complete through this program. Um, so, we could certainly work with that. It's, yes, sir.
Okay.
Last year, we had Falcon Design here, and, um, you know, they just wanted the opportunity to bid on projects. Would it be possible just to add them to this particular list?
No, sir, we can't. We'd have to re, we'd have to redo the shortlist or do individual RFPs for each project for them to have an opportunity to bid.
Okay, I'm on board with that.
Anybody want to move in that direction? I, I can tell you, because of the, the local interest I have, I voted against it to start with, and I'll vote against this, so I just let's record straight. I think we ought to have, allow local, uh, people the opportunity to bid on each and everything we got, and not just a, a package-type deal. That's just my thoughts, so, anyway.
I, I'll, I'll make a motion to, um, approve with the amendment that this be a six-month agreement, so that we can keep things going with the, the existing engineering firms.
Yes, sir.
Is that, uh, approving that to rebid it or, or change a policy that will, will bid out each and every project?
No, I, I, my, my, what, for point of clarification, what I'm looking for, I do like the pre-approved list, 'cause I think it gives staff the ability, just like we've moved from 10,000, trying to move to 50,000 to give the, the county manager and our staff more opportunity to execute and, and be efficient. Um, I, but I... execute and be efficient, but I would like, so there's nothing wrong with the pre-approved list, it's just I want to make sure that we're at least giving a nod to our local stakeholders, is really what I'm looking, seeking to do.
And we'll amend it from a one-year renewal to a six-month renewal, and using that language should clarify the terms. We'll correct the dates, we had the dates in there, from such and such to such and such, and we'll adjust that to a six-month renewal, if that's what you'd like for me to do per your motion.
That sounds good.
Okay, we have a motion?
Yes, sir.
So, so what we're saying, we're just going to renew this to six months, and then we're going to open up the idea of trying to deal local with our local people?
We'll give them the opportunity.
Doesn't mean, because I don't want the existing service providers to think we're throwing them out, because, I mean, if you're doing good work, we just want to make sure we give a competitive environment and then include our local business people, too.
But they had an opportunity when they first bid on this.
Yes.
See, that's the rub. It's, it's, it's a collective, one size fits all. Okay?
But I know my business, it just, I'm a local, I'm a professional service provider in my industry, and sometimes, you know, you get, you get popped a little bit, and then you go invest in your company, and, you know, you bring in different personnel, and, and, you know, you're, you're, you're a different company six to nine months, even a year in the future, and we just want to make sure we have a system where we recognize the local businesses.
Okay, we have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I want to make sure I understand exactly what's happening. Is, does the motion include a request to re-qualify engineer services, engineering services at the end of six months, or just to revisit it at the end of the six months?
It puts us in a position just to redo it. We're going to renew it, we'll be right back asking the same thing again. We didn't address anything relative to what I heard the board say, you wanted to consider local options. So I think we'd have to go back and do the rebidding to include everybody in it again.
Because that's, that's going to take a little bit of time. If, if you're going to re-qualify engineers, that, I don't know how long it took before, but it was a fairly subs...
No, I, six months, I think, can accomplish the intent of this program. I do, and, and either-or would work for us. If you want us to bring it back for another renewal, or if you want us to go back, go, we could look at three options. We could bring it back to you for renewal, we could rebid the shortlist, or we could do individual projects.
I don't think individual, let me ask you this, because you guys are the experts, y'all deal with this on a day-to-day basis. What would be your preference after you've heard what our desires are, but what makes you actually deal with the day-to-days? What's, what's your recommendation?
It's your desires is our recommendation.
No, no, no.
I understand the process of it.
Realize, because I want to hear their opinion. Do they want individual projects to be bid? Do they want a shortlist? I mean, because I'm not trying to take away the shortlist, I just want to make sure that we also give them the tools to be as efficient as possible.
And I believe that was what the first genesis of this was about. But I think the third option is there, we're going to run it for six months, but in that six months, be prepared to go back out and say we'll re-vet it, and then I think that's the only way I can catch both of them. I've got some things in the pipe that are pre-approved, this group has been selected based off pre-qualifications, carefully vetted out and ranked, so we've got that crew together. But if we want to open it up in six months, let's go ahead and start working towards that now so that I can address what the board has said, and we may be in the same spot, but at least you've got your options at six months from now. We've run this schedule, and we've got the options to look at local businesses first, which we all support.
Right, and, and there's a good chance the local businesses won't be on the list six months from now. I mean, that's, that's the thing. I don't want this to be like the fix is in. This is just providing an opportunity, just because we respect our local businesses.
Yes, sir. Henry, first.
Well, I think, I think we should take a serious look at putting something in place that would allow small and women-owned businesses to bid for projects across the board, not just road projects, and I think that will alleviate this particular concern. So I think it's time in Henry County, all the other counties in metro Atlanta do it, it's time for us to start looking at doing it.
District Three, I'm on the floor, District Three. I saw him before, I saw you. Do I need to pull my motion back? So far, we, we got the cart in front of the horse. We got the motion, we have it in the second, but we do... You have a second. We just, we have a second. Now we can go into official discussion. I yield the floor to District Three.
Bob, like you, Chairman, I voted against this last time it came up, because I wanted local business to have an opportunity to be able to bid on these projects at the same time. If we're willing just to do this for six months, and then we re-look at this process and maybe try to include these local businesses, then I'm going to support this measure for six months.
I yield the floor to District One.
My question, Rod, would be, on the shortlist, we have five companies, correct?
Yes, sir. Per category.
Per category, correct.
Yes, sir.
If, if we choose the six-month contract renewal, and they choose, some of the companies choose not to go on that six-month contract, how do we fill in those gaps?
We wouldn't. We would just utilize what's, my guess is that this is a no-cost transaction for them to renew. I can't imagine that they wouldn't renew because it's six months. They would, they would say, they would say no simply because they didn't want to participate anymore, not because we reduced it from one year to six months.
Okay.
But I don't anticipate that.
All right, thanks. Yes, sir. District Four.
I'm going to remain silent on the ins and outs of this, but I am going to speak to the fact that we've pretty much got most of our projects out to bid. I just don't want to go through a whole lot of trouble to bid out one remaining project, if we even have any. I mean, how many do we have left to even go out to engineering?
Right now, we have about five more that we would put out for bid.
And we've been doing five at a time, so I think the six months allowed, that's, if we look at this as a program, six months allows us to complete this phase of the program, and then we can, we can make whatever decision, whatever direction you guys want to go at that point, we can certainly discuss it then, but we, we'll finish those within that six months.
Okay, and that's, that's the point I'm trying to make to the board, is this kind of becomes a moot point at that point. Once all these jobs are already sent out to engineers, there's no other opportunities. I just don't want to get into it. It's a months, months, months-long process of going through and grading everything response, so I just don't want to get in a process where we've got our staff kind of spinning their wheels grading companies when there is no work to be put out. So that's, that's just my, again, I'm silent on the subject, but that's the function of it.
Any other comments?
Yeah. So, Rocky, I understand that we've got about twenty-five projects bid out right now.
Actually, you're very close. We had twenty-two projects that we did last year through this program, and just to make another comment regarding this, there are some other projects that, that we're going to have through the, that we're having funding through the FARA funds and GDOT. Those will have to be individually put out for bid. It will not be part of this program. So there are some additional projects still out there that we'll have to go through the, through the process of reviewing and accepting all the, all the information from all the consultants and going through that tedious work of reviewing as well.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
One point of clarification, just because we had three District Two resurfacing projects today. I don't plan on slowing this train down. I mean, we put, in our Splus Four, we've been District Two, we put resurfacing money every year, so I think there will be projects, because we're not, we're not slowing this train down in District Two, and I don't think the other commissioners are slowing down either.
Any further question?
Well, I'll tell you, Chairman, you know, take it that we're already behind in Splus. We got monies that need to be spent, I just, I think we need to move forward with this.
Okay, we have a motion, unless anybody else, you having a comment, District Five?
I provided a second.
Oh, yeah, I recognize that. Yes, I recognize the second after we discussed it. But anyway, we have a motion, we have a second, we had discussion, any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. So move. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman, more.
Next, have a resolution approving a work order quote for Phase Two Plumbing Renovation of Pod B at the Henry County Jail using Splus Four funds. Ron Burkhoff, good morning.
Chairman Commissioners, good morning. The voters of Henry County approved the Splus Four referendum, which included funds for the renovation at the Henry County Jail. There's a need to complete Phase Two of the plumbing renovation in Pod B at the jail. Phase One included the plumbing renovation for three showers to determine the best path forward, which was Resolution number fifteen dash fifty-eight. The Splus Department consulted with the Gordian Group, which is a facilitator of the NJPA EZIQC contract and Brown and Root Industrial Services to develop the scope of work for the remaining jail plumbing renovations. The work order and the quote is attached to the, the resolution. The scope of work includes replacing nineteen wall shower units, seven toilets, fifteen sinks, sixty-six metering valves, sixteen floor drains, adding four new floor drains, and applying epoxy wall coatings to eight of the shower restroom areas. The Splus Department is requesting authorization to use budgeted Splus Four funds to complete the Phase Two of the plumbing renovations in Pod B at the Henry County Jail, using the NJPA EZIQC contract in the amount of two-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand, eight-hundred-and-sixteen dollars and ninety-five cents. Anyone has any questions?
Anybody have any questions or comments? Somebody move that we approve the resolution? Have a motion from District One, second District Three. Any further discussion, all in favor raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. Next, on capital, we have a resolution approving a budget amendment and purchase of three new pumper fire trucks using Splus Four funds.
Yes, sir. The voters of Henry County approved the Splus Four referendum, which included funds for fire station capital equipment for the Henry County Fire Department. The Splus Department is requesting authorization to use Splus Four funds to purchase three new 2016 Pierce Sabre Pumper Fire Truck from Pierce Manufacturing, Inc., using the IAOF-C contract pricing. The total purchase price for each new 2016 Pierce Sabre Power Pumper Fire Truck, including delivery and discounts, is three-hundred-and-ninety-thousand, six-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars per truck. The total cost for all three trucks, including the discounts and delivery, is one million, one-hundred-seventy-one-thousand, nine-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars. A budget amendment is necessary transferring seven-hundred-thousand from the Splus Four calendar year 2017 Fire Station Capital Equipment Account, SP four thousand five, to the Splus Four calendar year 2016 Fire Station Capital Equipment Account, SP four thousand five. If anyone has any questions?
Anybody have any questions or comment?
Move to approve.
Have a motion, District Two. Second District Five. Any further discussion, all in favor raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. Resolution approving the purchase of emergency medical equipment for four new emergency medical vehicles using Splus Four funds.
Yes, sir. The Henry County voters approved the Splus Four referendum, which included funds for fire station capital equipment for the Henry County Fire Department. The Henry County Splus Department is requesting authorization to use Splus Four funds to purchase equipment for four new emergency medical vehicles. The purchase of the four new emergency medical vehicles I had brought to the board previously, which was Resolution number fifteen four oh two. The Henry County Fire Department requires special medical equipment to save victims' lives. The special equipment includes X-series defibrillators and auto pulse systems. Zoll Medical Corporation has provided quotes and sole source letters for four X-series defibrillators, including trade-in credits, in the net amount of seventy-five-thousand, eleven dollars and eighty cent, and for four auto pulse systems in the amount of fifty-six-thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty-six dollars. The total cost for the four defibrillators and the four auto pulse systems is one-hundred-and-thirty-one-thousand, two-hundred-and-sixty-seven dollars and eighty cents. The funds are available in the Splus Four calendar year 2016 account. Anyone has any questions?
Anybody have any questions or comment?
Move to approve.
Have a motion from District Two. Second District Three. Any further discussion, all in favor raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. Resolution authorizing execution of an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Locust Grove, Georgia and Henry County.
Yes, sir. The Henry County voters approved the Splus Four referendum, which included funds for replacement fire station two located in Locust Grove. The Henry County Splus Department has identified property located adjacent to the old fire station number two, which herein in the agreement is called the property, as the location for the new fire station. The property is owned by the City of Locust Grove. The City of Locust Grove desires to obtain the property on which the old fire station two is located. The City of Locust Grove has agreed to exchange the property for the old fire station two and has further agreed to perform site grading work on the property in exchange for payment of four-hundred-and-twenty-nine-thousand dollars. The City of Locust Grove shall construct and maintain a regional stormwater management facility for the new fire station in exchange for point-eight-five acres identified as Track B on Exhibit C contained in the intergovernmental agreement. If anyone has any questions?
Anybody have any questions or comments? Somebody move in that direction?
So move.
Have a motion, District One.
Second.
Second District Two. Any further discussion, all in favor raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. Resolution approving a budget amendment transferring three-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars from Splus Four Locust Grove Road Jackson Street at forty-two to the Splus Four Fire Station number two.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I need to amend the resolution. I'll, I'll tell you what amendment we need to make. It's just a point of clarification, and I'll say it when I go through the, the executive summary, if you don't mind.
Okay, when you get to it...
Yes, sir.
When you get to that part, just change it.
Yes, sir.
Tell us when you change it, hold it, write it down.
Construction of fire station number two was approved on Resolution fifteen dash three forty-six on eleven-three, twenty fifteen. The City of Locust Grove and the county has agreed to an intergovernmental agreement where the county shall pay for site work, including but not limited grading, water, sewer, storm management, curb gutter paving related to the new fire station in Locust Grove. Funding is needed to cover the site development costs at the new fire station number two. Funds are available on the Splus Four Locust Road slash Jackson Street at State Road forty-two project that has been completed by the Georgia Department of Transportation. A budget amendment is necessary transferring three-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars from Splus Four. We need to add in calendar year 2019, Locust Grove Jackson Street at forty-two, SP four one two zero, to Splus Four calendar, again, addition, calendar year 2016 Fire Station number two, SP four one oh one, to cover the cost of said site work.
Okay. I yield for District One.
Ron, we budgeted two million dollars for the replacements, correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Could you tell me how much we're over right now? Or do you have it?
Three hundred and... three-hundred-and-sixty thousand.
Okay, exactly what we're transferring, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Move to approve. Move to approve, have a motion. Second District Two. Any further discussion, all in favor raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move.
Chairman, before Ron...
Say something real quick.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Ron, before you leave the podium, I mean, I drove home yesterday, we, the chairman and I, as well as, I think, pretty much, most of the commission was at the groundbreaking yesterday for the Hampton Senior Center slash Rec Center, and we, we thanked the City of Hampton, we thanked the voters, we thanked the Splus Four Committee, but I drove home and I was like, you know, the thing that really disappointed me that we didn't get to say, I don't think we thanked the Splus staff, and I know I've, we've, we've sent you a lot of emails, you've always been very good on responding and being very timely with that, and yet a lot of your staff out there yesterday, and we did not give them a big thank you, so I wanted to apologize, but then also say thank you for all that your, your staff did, as well as the architects, because that, that concept plan is spectacular, and I know the, the whole community is pretty excited based upon the turnout we had at that, at that groundbreaking yesterday. So, thank you.
And Commissioner, if I may, I'd like to, I'd like to take that down just a little bit. I'd like to thank Tim Coley and Diane Reed, Tim Coley with Parking Rec and Diane with Senior Services. They did a tremendous job from the very start of this project, okay, making sure that both of the needs were met and making sure that we had a reasonable, we stayed within a reasonable budget.
I think it's going to be very functional, just the, all the thought that went into it from those departments, this is going to be a very functional, multi-use facility for all ages, so, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Next, we have a resolution approving the budget amendment for fiscal year 2015, 2016. This is Amendment number four, Budget Director. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Board of Commissioners. Before you have a budget resolution to increase the revenue for the golf course cotton fields and increase use of fund balance in the amount of twenty-eight-thousand, one fifty-nine to the increase the expenditure also of seven-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand, oh twenty-five.
Anybody, anybody got any questions or comment?
Move to approve.
Okay, yeah, let's get a second, then we'll discuss. We have, we have a motion from District Two. We have a motion from District Two.
Do you have a second?
Well, we don't get a second, we're not going to discuss it.
Commissioners, the reason I'll tap this before you is that we don't have the account set up where it should have been to recognize the revenue or the expenditures. Right now, each one of the transactions is going to be involved, we're going to have to do it on individual basis and bring them back. The temp was, and it has to be in your budget to be compliant with the audit aspects of it, and just recording, tracking the performance of it, it should be in your budget. Should have been some months back, so that was why the request is before you.
Well, let's do this. We have a second. Now, I take that back, we have a motion from District Two, and I know y'all ain't my like this, but to continue the discussion, to discuss, I'm going to second the motion. So now, I'm going to yield the floor to District Five.
Well, the problem with this is I didn't know anything about this agreement, who was negotiating, negotiating it, when it was negotiated. It was never approved by the Board of Commissioners. And, you know, I don't understand how we can vote upon anything that wasn't approved by the Board, so I just don't think this is the right thing to do.
I'm going to yield the floor to myself. For the benefit of people watching this, we are in absolute a dilemma with the golf course, and Mr. Tony was correct on many avenues. We have got to work this out. For an example, I think, I'm going to allude to the comments from the distinguished gentleman from District Five. The knowledge that the Board has is different than what it ended up, and this thing is so convoluted and it's got to be worked out that, I think I understand it, but I'm really not sure, but we've got about four parties, legal parties, involved in this mechanism. But the, what Mr. Holmes has made reference to, the Board had indicated that we merely amended an agreement that was approved in eleven, and instead of reinventing the will, the golf course was paying us two-thousand dollars a month. And we were getting some of the fees for the use of the pavilion over there. Now, what we did, the Board approved an increase from two-thousand dollars a month to twenty-six-hundred dollars a month, and also it, we were told that we would spend about forty-thousand dollars to do some upgrades for certain things, okay? The Board approved that. Well, push come to shove, at time we got some refinancing of the bonds came in, we had some other agreements that we were told had to do. But anyway, right now, it's so convoluted that I'd have to get somebody else to explain it to you, all the details. But in essence, what we doing, we in essence are paying the golf course seventeen-thousand dollars a month to manage it for us. And so that, we having some difficulty getting through that. But the purpose of this, and the county manager is dead on it, up until this point here, we absolutely have no way of tracking the monies that is spent. And basically, as I understand it, under the new scenario, and the Board, including myself, obviously I voted against all of that to start with, but it is so convoluted that the Board doesn't feel comfortable in doing anything, but the manager, which we charge to track the money, he doesn't have a instrument now to have a gauge to track the monies. And the way it's basically allegedly set up now is Henry County gets all the money. And then they, the golf course takes out expenses. So alluding to the numbers that Mr. Tony brought out, that's, the numbers are true. And it's, in my mind, during the course of all this, they talk about saving money. Well, I'm just going to tell you, folks, you know and we know, you can't even use the golf course and save your money in the same sentence. It's just the nature. But I think the, what we need to do, maybe I'd recommend that we table this issue and try to...
Before we take the motion off the table?
Okay, yeah, I'm going to get clarification before we take, I'm going to, I think it ought to be some more discussion opinion, instead of just me. But anyway, I yield the floor to District Two.
I think there's a key thing to keep in mind, and I'm going to poke a little fun. I think you have BCF error, and then you have AP, which is before cotton fields, you know, and then we have after purchase. There's nobody up here on the Board that was part of the purchase. And that's, I would encourage anybody who gets caught up in the purchase of the cotton fields to go Google search psychology of sunk cost. There's a behavioral finance thing that we talk about, is that we do it with concert tickets, we do it with all kinds of things, is after you buy it, you know, if you have, you know, buyer's remorse and other things, it can kind of, can freak you out. But nobody up here was part of the purchase. So that's a sunk cost, that's not, that's gone. So now we're left with a lot of real estate that we have to figure out, what in the world do we do with this thing? And what we've tried to figure out, I just want to kind of just give a recap of what got us here, is that Fred Alata, our finance director, did an incredible job, and I wish I knew the exact month, he could probably yell it out at us, but we refinanced the bonds that, for the original purchase, that saved the county three-point-three million dollars. We went from an interest rate five percent, four percent, four percent down to one-point-four percent, somewhere in that range. I mean, we, it was a three-point-three million dollar savings. And when we restructured and refinanced the debt, because the debt is done through the Development Authority, we had to, we all signed on, we signed the disclosure documents that we were part of an organization that was going to serve as a bridge so that we could go to the Development Authority to refinance and save the county three-point-three million dollars. There is, part of that, that structure was, we signed, the language was, we, the Board of Commissioners, were going to then provide the Chairman the authority to sign off on the management agreement to whatever company was going to run the golf course. And I think he did a fine job. I mean, there's really two parts to the fee that goes, because a lot of money, a lot of discussion has gone into, what are we paying the Swinnigers? Well, it's really broken into two parts. You have a management fee for just their expertise, they've been running golf courses for decades, and, you know, so you're paying them a management fee just for running the golf course, and then they've also had a capital commitment to the golf course to repair structures, greens, and other things. So a portion of that seventeen thousand dollars is split between management fees and capital projects. If you want to know what the management fee, because that's the part, if I was a citizen, I'd say, well, what are we paying these people to run the golf course? It works out to be a little over twelve thousand a month, if you multiply that by twelve, it's right around a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars a year, I think a hundred-and-fifty-four thousand to be exact. And that's before revenue. Now, we saw some numbers today where we were losing twenty-one thousand dollars a month, but if you saw on the slide that was put up, for those seven months listed, there was only seven, there was a seventy thousand dollar loss. Well, wait a minute, if we did seven times twenty, you can see that's a hundred-and-forty, but the number wasn't that big. What was it? Golf is a very cyclical business. You make your money between February and August. So you notice those months that were excluded from the analysis earlier weren't any of your key months, that's where you make all the money back. So we don't think we're going to make money, that needs to just leave, as the Chairman said, this is not a money-making proposition. This is, we've got a sunk cost, we've got something now we have to maintain, how do we do it as cost-effectively as possible? Because if we made it a passive park, because I've heard that said to us, we still have to provide insurance, we still have to go fix all the structures, make sure they're not leaking and water's not coming in, probably got to go fix cart paths still because people will want to walk, and we have to cut the grass, we have to fertilize the grass, there's no way we could do that and come close to being where potentially we'll be at either break even or losing thirty thousand dollars. It's just going to cost that much land, it's going to cost a lot more than that. So all this is asking is, and I think the Chairman is right, and I appreciate him moving forward, I would, I wish one of the other Commissioners would second the motion in the fact that we just need to have an accounting. I keep hearing all these numbers thrown out there, but maybe this comes from my CPA background, let's make sure that that section of our budget is actually there so we can code this thing, so we can come back a year from now and say, was it a bust? Or did we come close to breaking even with this sunk cost that we now have to move forward with? That's, that's the big part. And I don't ever like when citizens come up there, if you want to know, I've been on this Board now for four full years, and, you know, I'm finishing up my final year. I don't like confrontation. I look back at my career on this Board, and it goes back to How to Win Friends and Influence People. If you've never read that book, there's a nugget, go read Del Carnegie's book, It Will Change Your Life. I should have never confronted anybody who's ever stood up on that stage, and I think, because our citizens who come up and express their First Amendment, and I think Bill Tony's done a good job of bringing some things forward that we need to look forward, but, you know, I think that this is a positive thing that we've done this, and Fred, three-point-three million dollars, thank you for finding those savings for the citizens and the taxpayers. And we're not shorting the firemen on, because of the golf course. As you heard, we're trying to break this thing as close to even as possible, and that's about as much of a genie, putting it in a bottle, of trying to explain what's happened, where hopefully I didn't get too accounting on everybody, the understanding is.
Fred, he did a updated spreadsheet for the actuals that we have received and the forecast for February through June, if you would like to see a copy of that.
Commissioners, when I was charged by the Board just a little over a month ago, you asked me to build the parameters of either go or no-go, essentially. And no-go wasn't an option, so we have come back and tried to filter those things which are your alternatives to operate it up until sometime when you decide that you don't want to be in the golf course business anymore. But the analysis came about, that everybody had been operating off of the component of the seventeen thousand dollars, where the recapitalization of the investment that the management group was putting in was going to be fully capitalized at five-hundred thousand dollars. Well, if nothing else, once we started breaking out the analysis and getting the data trued up from the contractor, in this case, Mr. Swinniger, then it turns out that the investment number got smaller. So it's not the five-hundred thousand, right now it's a hundred-and-sixty-some thousand, and there is one of the notes that you got, that we could adjust that number for the capitalization they've spent. They haven't spent five-hundred thousand. And we've spent a lot that I didn't know we were going to spend. So in this analysis, and all these things that have come about, I've tracked and we've brought the project forward, so you know the facts about where you're at as best as we can know it today. It still will get refined as other issues come forward. I shared with you, there's some other capital work that I believe needs to occur at the golf course. Well, in that package, somewhere along the way, I have to be able to account for this in the budget. All this does is allow us to recognize the transactions, whether they're revenues and expenditures, as part of the budget, and that's going to be, that is a requirement for the accounting systems and the accounting requirements we have as a local government. So that, this is all us doing. It doesn't change any issues about the contract, whether the Board wants to recognize it or not, that's up to you and how we go forward with it. Makes no difference there, but I do have to have a vehicle within the budget that lets me further refine, okay, this is what our revenues were, I haven't recognized them other than just carrying them on a side sheet, but it needs to be in the budget, it needs to be capitalized in this current year budget, and this is the reason why I'm putting it in now, to make up for what's not in the current budget and to make sure it's captured in this coming year budget so we'll know where we're going, you'll have a good barometer of what the costs actually are. So this is just asking you to set up the account for the transactions that are going to occur, we just need them on the books.
Well, let me share this. The issue I have, obviously, I agree with everything Commissioner Preston said. I don't know where we're going with all this, it may end up in a court of law, one way or another, but I don't want to, I understand why we need to make this a budget item to where we can track it. Right now, for me to track it, it's been piecemeal.
Yes.
Okay, piecemeal means, I don't know about the seventeen thousand, I don't want to know where the seventeen thousand came from, so then I have to go to the finance director and he sends it then, I want to know why we no longer collect the twenty-six hundred and so that. It gets so convoluted that you have to ask for pieces. Now, I see the need to put this in the budget, it needs to be there, but I want to, I want to have a disclaimer on my vote, that I would vote to do this, provided that somewhere in a court of law, that simply because I voted to do this, that doesn't mean that I concur or I go back and, a part of the agreement, which I am not. So I want to make sure, just for record, that I would merely vote for it with a disclaimer, that I'm not saying that I'm, for any of this, other than the fact, for a financial benefit for the county manager, to where we can track it.
Well, it certainly isn't the county manager, it is our processes. I'm making the request, I think it's essential for a sound accounting recording, but I'd hate to think that it was a lending issue. It is not. This is a business issue, whether it was county manager A, B, C, or D, this is something that should have been done, and it's just a corrective measure, make sure we align with accounting practices we're going to be bound to.
And the fact, the fact, Mr. Chairman, that you budget for revenue and expenditures only reflects the fact that they happen, not the fact that the Board or any individual member of the Board supports the fact that they happen. The budget is a reflection of what actually happens, and this money is actually coming into and out of the county, it has to be included in your budgets.
Well, on my, what we're doing, we amended the budget, we are amending the budget to add this to it.
That's right.
And I think on the financial end, we obviously need to do that, and every Commissioner can, can track it now and not have to do emails and get, do it piecemeal. But I'm saying, and I'll state this publicly just for the record, I think what we end now, the new agreement's null and void. So consequently, I don't want to tarnish my thoughts to anybody, third party that says, you know, simply because you voted to amend the budget now, that means that you're in favor of this, so...
And it would not have that legal effect, it would never have that legal effect.
Okay, I know it wouldn't have because I just stated it, but having said that, does anybody else have any, okay, I'll yield the floor to District One.
When the gentleman come up earlier and spoke and showed us back in, from July to December two thousand and fifteen, that we had lost seventy-eight thousand dollars roughly, I just want to put out there that I think the golf course was closed for some greenworks and stuff like that, so we lost a lot of revenue due to that fact.
Well, there was also another that Mrs. Sar is putting up there, it's not the full year, and it's a strange quirk of the math, but when you add the first five months that we had of it, one, two, maybe six months of it, there are some transactions that actually, that didn't occur, if you look on the management side, it actually shows a profit, if you can call it. It's not really a profit because it's just a contribution that reduces your cost. When you add the management fee in it, the number was correct, it was out there at a hundred-and-some thousand dollars. And the seasonality that Commissioner Preston brings up are the curves that I've showed you before, the Swinnigers have actually projected pretty well. It ramps up very quickly, March, April, May, and then from July, it starts to taper off. It is a slower and a different tapering, the curve is differed on, from July on, but it ramps up very quickly. That has been proven with antecedent data, it works the way they've said, just in turn. But each year, we've lost, revenues have decreased each year until this current year, when we've started looking at it. And as it says right there, and I think it's clearly, that if everything works the way we were looking at, and we didn't have all projected numbers, the actuals and the few that are projected there do show us with a managerial loss of twenty-eight thousand dollars, if everything works in the next few months as it's projected. And that was the reason why I'm saying, let's go ahead and let's see what happens, because we are going to go in the peak months. Is it prof, is it possible that it, that twenty-eight thousand dollars be neutralized? Yes. And I think in the correspondence you saw last night, based off the information we've been able to put together on actual data relative to that, the amount of money we pay for recapitalization, if you reduce the payment down to that, along with the management fee that's there, we may actually break even on this, if the projections will hold out for the next few months, relative to the managed agreement. And I think Commissioner Preston made a good point, separating the management agreement from the purchase price is absolutely essential to make any of this make sense down the road. That management is a sunk cost, and it happens to local governments all the time, there's reason why you fund lots of things that are for the benefit of the public. So now we've got a golf course, we've got a management fee, we are spending money for the current management of it. This account, in our current year, will just track what the transactions are. The reason the accounts would be is I've got to have a budget for it next year also, and I don't have it in the budget I'm working on to be presented to y'all and adopted in June. It's an essential vehicle for me to be able to have that in place, so you can see what the real costs are, and we don't do the piecemeals, or we don't get the right information to you in a timely way. And the public has asked a lot of questions about it, I think it should have. But this is the information I believe is there and is representative of where we're at right now, and I believe it needs to be a part of your budget, with the disclaimers or whatever you need, it's an essential part of us going forward to make the decisions that this Board may make in a few months.
I yield the floor to District Four.
Chairman.
Chairman, my comments are going to be rather direct, rather short. I did not support the purchase of this golf course at any time, and we've done that, that ship has sailed, I understand completely. I also do not support Henry County running this golf course at all. No way. I cannot support putting any more money into managing a contract and looking into where the money goes from managing a contract that I don't support. So that's where I'm at, that's my opinion, and that's how I'm going to vote. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else have any comments? If not, all in favor of the motion, raise your right hand.
Did we get a second?
I seconded.
You seconded, that's right.
I did. All in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. Motion defeated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll have a resolution that was added on, and this is kind of like housekeeping. Resolution of the Henry County Board of Commissioners to amend the fiscal year 2015, 2016 by that this would be the Fifth Amendment. Yes, ma'am?
Before you have a resolution to increase the property taxes by the amount of $4,231,791 and decrease the use of fund balance of the same amount, this will be record, housekeeping for the adoption of the millage rate that we adopted back in March, I'm sorry, August.
Okay, does anybody have any questions? I have a comment. And last year, when we was doing the budget, it's, we always got the cart in front of the horse. We always, in May, we always have to approve the budget, and we don't consider the millage in the assessment until July, August, somewhere. Okay, so we approved the budget, and obviously, we don't know what the assessments are, we got some ideas what the assessments may be, but we don't really have a reasonable idea as to what the millage might be to generate based on the assessment. So in order to legally balance the budget, anticipating increase in the assessments of taxes, then last year, we ended up to balance the budget, taking $4 million and some odd dollars out of fund balance, okay? We had to do that to balance it, okay? So when the budget kicked in, July the first, then we get around to assessing the taxes. And this increase has a rub with a lot of people, me too, but the millage, even though the millage was lowered significantly, because of the assessments, the property taxes basically went up near magically. And the only reason to use an increase is the fact that the state, by law, which I don't really like it, they indicate that if you don't go back to zero, then you have to designate that as a tax increase. So what it says right here, it says the budget to amend the increased property tax, we're not increasing property tax. Okay, that's a-
We're increasing the line item.
We are, we are approving, putting monies that was generated by property tax-
Yes.
-over here, because the property tax is really about $70 million, okay? So at the end of the year, if you're looking at a balanced budget, it would appear that we ran over, we had a surplus of $4,231 in fund balance. So I just thought I would indicate that, so having said that, anybody else got any questions? Somebody move, we approve this resolution?
Move to approve.
Have a second, I made a correction, we have a motion to approve it, have a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, no, same sign?
Thank you.
So move. Thank you. Approval of the minutes for January the 19th, 2016, somebody move, we approve the minutes as published.
So move.
Have a motion District three.
Second.
Second District one, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. Chairman and Commissioners, the only comment I have is, we've had, we've had several people approach the podium, and all I would ask is, number one is, this is, this ain't my first rodeo, I've been elected official for like 35 years, so if somebody wants to get me, they, I might give them some pointers, and they could probably do better. But I would just suggest that, you know me, you look me up, just Google, the people that come up here, if you would, just Google their name, Google Fed County, or City of Atlanta, or the Georgia Public Safety, just Google that and form your own opinion. But having said that, I yield the Florida District five. I yield the Florida District two. I yield the Florida District three. I yield the Florida District one, I yield the Florida District four.
I'll take it.
So you ready for that?
Yes, sir. Friday, I got to spend the day with Henry County Fire Department, Station One, Shift B. I just wanted to thank the guys for taking time to show me what they do and tell them I'm very impressed, and you guys have a very unique job. We went from fueling a truck to fighting a fire in about 45 seconds. The adrenaline dump was impressive, so just telling you guys, I appreciate everything, appreciate what you do for Henry County, and we're here for you.
Thank you. County Manager, you have anything you'd like to say, Mr. Chairman?
A couple of things, Commissioners. First thing, we have been besieged with lots of work related to floods and high watermarks and all these things that occurs, potholes that you've gotten of, and I want to again tell you that the end is in sight, but it will continue probably through June, that we're going to see manifestations of what this rainwater has done. We met with some folks yesterday that, you know, are absolutely convinced that the 100-year flood events that have occurred were as a result of something else, other than getting 25 to 30 inches of rain in Henry County. It's interesting, the variability of how much rain fell across the county, not everybody got the same amount, but it's still, the water's going to be with us a while, it's not all drained out, so you're still going to be getting potholes, you're going to get questions about, what is the county doing about flood management? And unfortunately, for those kind of rain events, they just have to run their course. But it has damaged our roads, you're aware that we've applied for some of the state funding put out there to help us recoup some of the costs for those repairs, we'll learn the results of those pretty quick. We also, since I've been here, we've had a number of people ask, and we have another piecemeal, about how we explain our projects, whether it's sploshed, whether it's a DOT project. So I mentioned to you that we were moving to a software that we already owned, the Microsoft project. Hopefully, that we'll be able to give to you so that you can have on your phone or your tablet, so you can take a look at them and understand where the money is and what this timing is for these various projects that are coming for you. Commissioner Preston's is the, Splosh Project is the first one out of the box, just so we can all get experienced with it and seeing if it's conveying the data that our experience tells us needs to be in there. Very useful document, I think it'll be helpful to you to be able to see it and be able to track the projects as they're going through time. I have finished another review over the clinic, and this is an update on that. The stakeholders who will be responsible for implementing that, we're meeting tomorrow afternoon, I believe, or tomorrow morning, the terms and agreements that I had initial concerns with are not addressed or not responsive in terms of a new contract, it just made notations on it. We're going to send them a proposal that captures everything in it and have them come down and take a look and see if we've got a contract that's going forward. What was missing in that proposal that we are now going to have to add is another budget issue, is that there was no ongoing capitalization of maintenance work that was put in the contract. It requests some pest control services that were specific, we haven't put it into there that, we didn't account for it. It allows for construction to be done inside the building at the contractor's request at our expense. There were a number of personnel issues that related, the contractor proposes, and all of those were in addition and above the services provided for in the initial price, but they were at our additional cost. You know, if we wanted to stay open on these or other specifics to personnel costs, all those things came back to the county. So when I asked for that in my first letter, it was non-responsive in regard about how that may be negotiated, so I'm going to have to send another letter out, but we're moving it on. Hopefully, I can get this thing, get a better grip on it, and get something in their hands inside if they want to recognize the viability of going with the clinic or not, or made a modification to the contract. We've got, in y'all's book, y'all, in y'all's mailboxes, y'all all have received the auditor's discussion and analysis from Alden and Jenkins. It's a good read, the first sheets of it tell us a few things that we've got to do better across the organization. We will pull those up, we will meet with those individuals, we'll make sure that the correction actions are in place so that we don't have that same issue next year. We'll have something else, that's what the auditors are supposed to do, but not having the reoccurring themes that we can address without adding on layers of government or staffing, we're going to look at our processes to make sure that we don't have the same issues get cropped up in our audit again. The Go Submittle went, it's all gone, we wanted to try to get a picture of y'all pushing the button, but that didn't work out. We'll probably have it worked out, so that when we get the favorable results, that we'll collectively have a picture of everybody throwing their hands up on that. But good effort across all the cities did participate, we had some outstanding letters of support from the Chamber and Henry Quality Growth, certainly the Development Authority and some individuals who participated. So I'm really pleased with the package, the $100,000 that the board put in made it a much more compelling package, so I believe we've got a good chance on it. We'll know sometime in June, I believe, is when we'll get the results of that. Again, on the reminder, if you haven't seen the training that is being put out there for our public safety, for active shooter exercises, and for its instructions of what people are going to be doing in public buildings, I think there's two left, make certain that you get in one of them. It is a very revealing analysis of the threats that we're facing in our country and here in Henry County, and I think it's important the board to see how we're reacting to this organizational-wide in each one of the facilities, and everybody here has got a role, including y'all. If you hadn't got a chance to see it, the gentleman said they'd be glad to put on a special one just for y'all. It's a compelling analysis, and I think it's worthwhile and will have benefits in the future to us. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, that's all I have, if you have any questions for me.
Okay. Counsel, you have anything?
Nothing today.
There are coming meetings in advance, March 1st at 9:00 AM is a regular meeting, March 15th at 6:30 is a regular meeting. I want to reiterate that the regular meeting scheduled for February the 16th at 6:30 PM has been counseled due to the Henry County School System's winter break. Having said that, will somebody move to adjourn into executive session in accordance with the provisions of the law? And I understand it's going to be limited to personnel issues only unless somebody tells me otherwise.
Personnel only is all I have, Commissioner.
Say again?
Personnel only is all I have.
Okay, somebody move in that direction?
So moved.
Have a motion District four, second District one, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, so move. We are now moving into executive session.